Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour of 7:00. And I would like to call the Lexington City Council meeting to order for Thursday, March 17. And thank you all for being here. If you will, please join me in standing and I'm signing the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all very much. And regarding the agenda, unless council objects, I'd like to move item 15 dot 4, review and consideration of the alternatives for the personal property tax up before the -- or I'm sorry, just after the proclamation. And I was expecting Steve Bolster, so any objection to moving that to 15.4? And that's to accommodate Karen with her evening in recovery. Steve is not here, so I'm not going to read the proclamation recognizing April 4 through 10 as National Public Health Week. If he should sneak in. Yeah, I think I see him wandering in here. While he's wandering, I did want to take a point of personal privilege and recognize the situation in Ukraine and offer a prayer that was delivered by Reverend Laura Kraus, a Presbyterian minister or director. And so if you'll indulge me on this piece. "God of mercy, justice, and peace, our spirits are heavy with sorrow, our souls shocked at the sudden and breathtaking violence, the invasion of Ukraine by their neighbor Russia. We pray for lives caught in the grip of war, who hear the bombs in the night, the ominous movement of troops on the road into town, the whistle of incoming shells, for a cry from a desperate neighbor or a shout of warning, for those who huddle in subways and basements or flee for the borders clutching their children's hands. We pray for families separated from fathers, brothers, and sons who must remain to fight and protect their homeland. We pray for neighbors in Eastern and Central Europe as their hearts and doors open to these refugees. That strained resources will become an abundance of hope, that fears and struggles with racism will yield to a generosity of profound welcome, that communities of faith within Ukraine will be protected from harm and sustained in their efforts to feed and shelter their neighbors, that peacemakers and protesters in Russia will be heard and their lives preserved. May we undergird our prayers with tangible resources to help. May we reach deeply, give generously, and welcome extravagantly. May we lift our voices in a strong and unified advocacy. May we all, even as we breathe and lament, breathe out mercy, hope, and peace. When we walk the way to tomorrow, repent our complicity in cultures of violence and renew our efforts toward justice and peace." And that's a prayer offered by Dr. Reverend Lori Kraus. So thank you all for that indulgence. And our hearts and thoughts go out to the people of Ukraine. I'm going to back up because I asked for council's consideration to move the personal property tax, but I didn't hear a response or everybody okay with that? Okay. So we will adopt the agenda with that modification. And Steve Bolster did arrive. I'll invite him to the podium. And we will recognize National Public Health Week. For those of you who don't recognize Steve, he's no longer the Finance Director of the county, but the Finance Director for the Virginia Department of Health.
Business Manager.
Business Manager. Congratulations on your new post. And glad that you're here as we recognize April 4 through 10 as National Public Health Week. Whereas the President of the United States traditionally designates the first full week of April as National Public Health Week. And whereas National Public Health Week is scheduled for April 4 to the 10, 2022, and the theme is Public Health is Where You Are. And whereas since 1995, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public, policymakers, and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. And whereas the Central Shenandoah Health District's mission is to protect and promote the health and well-being of residents in the Central Shenandoah Valley. And whereas the Central Shenandoah Valley -- or Central Shenandoah Health District serves the counties of Augusta, Bath, Highland, Rockbridge, and Rockingham, and the cities of Buena Vista, Harrisonburg, Lexington, Stanton, and Waynesboro, with an estimated combined population of 309 citizens. And whereas the Central Shenandoah Health District's public health professionals help our communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as the COVID-19 pandemic, natural disasters, and disasters caused by human activity. And whereas the Central Shenandoah Health District's public health professionals have and continue to display an unprecedented commitment to serve our communities in response to the COVID-19 pandemic by administering local and regional programs involving testing, contact tracing, case investigations, vaccinations, outbreak investigations, and informal campaigns to combat this public health crisis. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and Lexington City Council, call upon all citizens of Lexington to observe the week of April 4 through the 10, 2022, as National Public Health Week, during which our residents may join in celebrating the dedication of our public health professionals, past and present, and their families, whose support allows them to serve our communities, adopted the 17th day of March 2022. Happy St. Patrick's Day, and thank you for the work that you and your team do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And invite you, if you'd like, to address council with any other words.
Sure. Just my appreciation to the city of Lexington, in particular, City Manager Jim Hallis, and of course, City Council for considering this proclamation. We've reached out to the 10 local governments within our district, and we're pleased to see that everyone was supportive of considering this proclamation. So thank you very much.
Steve, thanks for being with us. You're welcome to depart, but we'd love for you to stay and come visit anytime.
I appreciate it. I've had plenty of night meetings, so I think I'm going to blast out.
Fair enough. Terrific. Next item on the agenda is 15 dot 4, review and consideration of the personal property tax. City Manager.
Yeah, I'll go first. Thank you, Karen. As background information, we all did hear from our Commissioner of Revenue on February 17 about the increase in vehicle values at 36% or more. And understand that this is a very unique occurrence. It has probably never happened before, has it, Karen?
Yes.
Right. And you could attribute it to COVID or any number of factors, as things have continued to change in our society and economy these days. But whatever the cause, it's real, it's with us. And there are several means by which we could -- City Council could reduce the amount of taxes paid by our vehicle owners in the community. One is to change the percentage of the National Automobile Dealers Association values. Currently, we use 100% of that clean value. That's what the Commissioner of Revenue has used over time. We could also decrease the actual tax rate, which is currently at $4.25 per hundred. And the third thing we could do would be to increase the personal property tax relief that we've granted over the years, which has been 60%. We could grant something higher than that, should we choose. Obviously, there's an offset, if you will, to the extent the City Council would lower or decrease the taxes, there's lower revenues for the city. There's also a relationship between the amount of personal property tax relief that's provided and the amount of that personal property tax relief fund that we currently have on balance. Over the years, we've had a substantial fund that we could use for that purpose, and that purpose alone. And I believe that's at about $305,000 today. It had been higher in the past, and each year, we've used incrementally a little bit of that fund to give a better or more -- a higher break to our taxpayers with that personal property tax relief. To the extent we use a greater amount of that today, we have less to use tomorrow, or next year, shall we say. So you might want to weigh, as we look at this, how much we use this year, what is left for next year, then? If you look at the examples that were included in the agenda, both the Commissioner and I looked at an 85% and 80% scenario of assessment of the National Automobile Dealers Association values. Again, currently, we're at the 100% rate. So as those values go down, of course, your taxes would then go down as well, because the assessed value we're taxing on declines. We currently receive from the state only $581,419 for personal property tax relief. So anything over that figure is what we have to then make up with that $305,000 reserve fund that we have. So one of the things, as I said, we're looking at is what kind of new revenue can be generated by the city. It's important to consider what the revenues are there. We certainly, I'm sure you don't want to, and I don't want to, see city residents, vehicle owners, paying a 36% increase in taxes. But if we were to use an 18% level, which is approximately what the 85% NADA and a 60% tax relief would provide, we have about $243,000 in new revenue for the coming year. Okay? And that's less than half of what we would have if we left it at the level of 36%. Now, the Commissioner has looked at and called different communities, and we know even locally that a number of them are not reducing their personal property tax relief at all. Clearly, some will. But just as an indicator, some are saying, we need the revenues, and they're taking advantage of this. If you look at the opportunities or the options I've made available, Option A would provide less relief on taxes for owners of personal vehicles than Option B. However, it was still a sizable decrease in taxes paid. Option A does leave approximately $112,000 in the personal property tax relief fund for FY '24 or future years. The current increase in vehicle values, in all likelihood, is really an anomaly. It's not going to continue to occur year after year. And as vehicles depreciate, the amount of taxes we pay on that, any of us, will go down. I don't know how much on an annual basis, but that typically is the trend, of course. It does not stay the same, unlike real estate taxes. Once your house is assessed, that's the tax you pay for four years. The current budget that we're looking at, the Commissioner -- excuse me, the Finance Director and I, is being built in without a real estate tax increase. We don't recommend any tax increase of that nature. You haven't seen it yet, of course, but I will assure you, there's no tax of that nature in the budget, no other tax increase in the budget. So this becomes even more important, because it's one of the few revenue sources that would grow. While we're just finishing up the draft of the FY '23 budget, there are still some uncertainties. We don't know what the state is going to do with the grocery tax. It appears today that they're not going to cut the local revenue, which is good news for us. Some would say it's bad news for individuals buying groceries, because they maybe do need that relief at this time in particular. We also don't know what inflation's going to do to spending in the future. Over the last year and a half, as we've come out of COVID, you've seen, and we've all seen and heard, that revenue sources, because of spending for meals taxes and lodging taxes and sales taxes, have continued to go up a good clip. We've done well. People have been spending money, and that has raised revenues in those areas. Not being an economist, I can't say what'll happen, but with inflation, and if you have to put $25 more of gas in your car each week, maybe you don't go out to lunch twice a week. You're going to cut back spending somewhere, most people. So those revenues are going to certainly not increase to the levels we've seen and may flatten out. So that's just something that, as I worked with the Finance Director to put the budget together, I've tried to take into account, because I don't want to be too optimistic there. I love to say that we're going to see strong and robust revenue growths in those areas, but that seems a bit unlikely to me. And I'd rather be facing a situation 12 months from now, when we say, yes, we've got hundreds of thousands of dollars in reserve, as opposed to where hundreds of thousands of dollars short. So not saying either of those cases would play out or scenarios, but nonetheless, they could, and I'm trying to be conservative. So all in all, I would recommend to City Council, with the work of the Commissioner of Revenue, she may want to make some comments, that we look at the 85% level of the NADA. So we don't have her assess it 100%, but 85% instead. And that also, we keep the personal property tax relief at 60%. That primarily so that we do have some money left over next year, so we can still give a little bit more than the minimal increase that we would otherwise give, because we'd only have $581,000 again next year from the state to apply to personal property tax relief. So that would be on my recommendation. There is a resolution that would be passed. The Commissioner has a copy of that, and that would basically mirror the recommendation I've made. And Karen, would you like to make a few comments on those things I'm -- certainly, I know I've missed, so.
I think you did a great job on everything that you mentioned. One thing I'd like to mention is that we've always, except for, I think it was in 2008 and 2009, every year, we've had an increase in personal property. Okay? Like last year, we had a 10% increase in personal property, of which we had revenues for. So it's not abnormal for us not to have an increase, because normally, you do. And eight and nine is when we had the clunkers, and the gas prices were almost $5, and everybody was selling their old vehicles. And the vehicles' prices went way down, kind of like they're going up now, but they went way down then. So your Chevy truck went from, say, $2,500 on an older one to like $600 type of thing. So you just have to remember that you've always had some type of increase in your revenue, you know, for the personal property.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, you've heard the City Manager's recommendation and Karen's comments. Are there any questions? Ms. Strong.
Yes, I have one. The City Manager's recommendation, we would use $192,000 from the fund, leaving us only $112,000 for next year. And have we used that much out of the fund at one time before?
No, we have not, because we haven't been in this position. You know, like now, if we do 85%, it's going to be at 17%, as opposed to like last year, which was one of the highest, was 10%.
Right.
So we haven't used that. And one other thing you have to remember, we talked about this earlier, was that this is what I have right now. We prorate, which means every vehicle that comes into the city will be assessed, and it will be getting this personal property tax release also. So the 192 may end up being 200 by the end of the year. So I just want to put that out there.
I would just say that, you know, we started this conversation, we had a work session about this back in February, and I am very appreciative that you've been educating us on this coming decision. I mean, it's not this -- it's very technical, and if this was us learning about this for the first time tonight, it's pretty deep. But I feel like the education that you've done, with the example where you provided about, you know, the Honda, that, you know, putting it in real terms for a person with a car that might be worth $19,000, now it's worth $24,000, and what that means for that person, their own personal, what they're going to pay. And so I am very appreciative of the education that we've received. You know, one of the examples that we received previously back in February was setting the tax early, looking at the assessed value at 75%. And, you know, without having seen the budget at all, not knowing what's in it, I'm just wondering, that being one of the options before, if that could still be an option? Or, you know, because I just don't have a true picture of our revenue needs right now. And that's, you know, frustrating, but I know that we've got the cigarette tax. Just a meeting or two ago, we heard that our meals tax and our lodging tax was the best that it's ever been. And so I certainly, you know, recognize the need to be conservative in your budgeting, but we've had surpluses quite a few years in a row. I think just about every year that I've been on City Council. And so I'm just kind of wondering if that just is just insurmountable, if we were to not look at such an increase on people with their cars. In this year, where gas is $4, or hopefully going down, $4 a gallon. But at the grocery store, I feel like my family's spending $100 every two days at the grocery store. It's very hard on families right now, and so I'm just wondering if this is the right time to say, we need an 18% or 17% tax increase on the average, you know, for the average person? So I kind of throw that out to my fellow council members, maybe for discussion, or that wasn't really a question, Karen, I realize that, but I feel like you've educated enough us enough that we're ready to kind of talk about this.
But before we get knee-deep in it, I just want to affirm, you need counsel to make a decision prior to what date.
Well, we can't do anything. Like, no bills can be printed, they can't be sent out.
Right.
And there's only like eight localities that have early billers, like us. And, you know, normally, Pat has this information by the 1st of April, you know, like she's got the stuff to the printers to do the stuff by the 10th of April. So it's, you know, that's why I brought it in February before my surgery, trying to, you know, put everything out there into place.
Yeah. Just to confirm, we need to make a decision tonight on what this needs to be because of that for the billing. And this rate is set for the calendar year, not the tax year. That's one piece that's also nuanced. So what we collect this year fiscally, and then starting July 1, when everybody goes out and buys a new car, because the chips have come in and everybody can get a new car, we have no control over those things, and that's what becomes a little bit of a crapshoot. So Ms. Alligood.
Thank you. In the past, I'm speaking of real estate taxes now, I can remember attending meetings where the assessment increased for real property in the city, and City Council made the decision to make it revenue neutral. And they allowed the adjustment of the percentage so that with the new assessments, that there wouldn't be an overall tax increase, even though the assessments went up, to make it revenue neutral. What percentage for personal property would make it revenue neutral?
I have no idea. I mean, like, I'm not, you know, I'm not in finance. I don't know what the revenues are needed for that. I can't tell you that.
I think we need to know that.
But I know that we're having a reassessment year right now. And I'm sure some of you have been on council before, when we had, when we had that, the revenue, I mean, the reassessment. And one of the things is, we have to be within 1% of what we had last year, what our taxes were last year. That's the state requirement. We cannot charge more than 1% of what our taxes were then. It wasn't in like a choice, it's what you have to do that first year of a reassessment.
So would Mr. Ziegler, 75%?
1% is what we did before.
Be revenue neutral?
So the spreadsheet that we were provided in February did essentially, and again, so much can change. People can have different cars this year than they had last year. What the spreadsheet from February was looking at, 2021 original book values, or book values or something, and trying to make a really close comparison. And essentially--
It was like $43,000 or something.
Yeah. It was actually, the net taxes for 2021 was $718,000. And if you did, if, you know, 75%, it would be $721,000, actually. It was about $3,000 difference. And again, these are not perfect numbers. There's a lot of other variables, but this is what we, this was a really close enough look. And, but that was also similar, for the example of the 2018 CRV, that we just hypothetically were discussing, what that might mean for someone, that last year, they paid $323, and this year, they might pay $324.
The question for council is if they want to arguably be more conservative at an 85, which should produce significantly more revenue, or if you want to anticipate people are going to continue to buy cars, and 75% would be that close to neutral for this particular tax. When we look at the overall budget, if we end up short, we may have to have a real estate tax increase, or pull from the general fund. I mean, we have different options from that standpoint. So I would ask what the pleasure of council is. Dennis, go right ahead.
I would say I see both arguments here. I'm wondering if maybe the best strategy would be to sort of split the difference and model our increase off of last year's increase, and sort of look for that benchmark, which I think would be option, am I wrong, and Option C, at 80% rather than 85? That's still an increase, that still is helpful, but it's, and it's on a par with the increase that we have gotten in the past, like last year. But it also, you know, recognizes that this is an unusual year with the blue book values going up the way they have. So that would be my preference in this instance.
And I should let you know that J.D. Powers, who's who bought NADA, they are saying that this is not going to be a quick fix. Okay? They're predicting it's going to be three to five years out. They don't know if it's going to be the 36% next year or not. But the demand for vehicles, used vehicles, is very high, because one thing is because of the chips and stuff, but that this is not going to go away this year. So, you know, you need to take that in consideration also.
Well, we do have the opportunity to revisit this each year.
Yes.
And adjust it.
Yes.
So we can tweak the sales.
Yes.
Ms. Strong.
I would be okay with the Option C, with the 80%. I'm concerned about using up too much of our safety net, our fund. And since this is a bit of an anomaly, I'm not real comfortable about trying to balance our budget on one-time money. If we're going to have a budget, we need to know what our revenue source is long-term. And I do agree that I could go with Option C.
To Leslie's point about using up our fund, that we've accumulated over the years since, I mean, since we were going to eliminate the car tax, right? It's going to be gone after next year anyway, right? I mean, the way that we've been spending down our fund, and unless the state provides more than--
They will not.
It will not. Will we get another year out of it next year?
We'll always have the $581,000.
We always will have that, but in order to--
If we use all this money this year--
But in order to provide the 60% relief, our fund will be almost gone, or will be gone.
Well, based upon this, the 80% that I did, it would be 700, I'm sorry, $714,920 would be used up. So we would be taking from the 305 about $150,000 or so from that. So we'd still have $157,000, $160,000 some of that.
Right. So next year--
For next year to go to the 589. We would.
So next year, it would essentially be gone anyway. The way that we're spending that fund balance, it's going to be gone next year.
With, if the percentages continue to rise.
Right. So, I mean, that's something also to consider. I mean, we're looking at that, I mean, the county provides 45%.
No, theirs is 37.
37%.
37 or 34 last year.
Right. 37% personal property tax relief.
Yes.
And we're at 60%.
Right.
So one way or the other, taxes will be going up soon, no matter what we value a car at, because our personal property tax relief abilities will be going away.
Correct.
Yeah.
Karen, remind me, the reserve funds, where did those come from?
Every year since 2006, they've given us--
Pull that microphone a little bit closer to you, so--
Okay. Every year since 2006, they've given us a 589, 419.49 a year, or whatever the--
Right.
419.49, yeah, a year. And we haven't always used it. You know, like, they gave it to us, that's what our limit was. This is what you're going to get, whether you use it or not. limit was, this is what you're going to get whether you use it or not, you can forward it to future years. Like, we could have in 2006, we could have said, okay, we're going to do 70% for three years, and it would have been all gone. And we said, no, you know, everybody agreed, let's do the 60%, and we think we probably can take it out 10 years. We took it out a lot longer than 10 years by being able to hold on the reserves, what we had, to be able to keep it so that people would be able to say, oh, I got a 60% relief. They pretty much would know when they were buying a vehicle or whatever they were doing, it was going to be 60%. It wasn't going to be coming to you in March, and oh, now it's got to be 47%, and oh, it's going to be 45% next year, or it's going to be 36% the following year. It was something that they could pretty much count on for their budgeting as to what vehicle they were going to purchase.
Thank you. Terrific. Further discussion or anyone want to uh provide a consideration?
It's also just while we're educating ourselves and the public, that relief is only on the first $20,000 of the value of your car.
Correct.
So if your car has, you know, I drive a 16-year-old Jetta, you know, and it's still luckily below the 20,000, but if you you're on that borderline of uh, it used to be an $18,000 car, and now it's going to be assessed to $22,000, there's no relief on that extra $2,000.
Correct, like you saw on the Honda.
Exactly, so uh and that additional $2,000, that's 20 times $4.25. You're getting hit on, you know, $90 more taxes that you're going to pay just for it going up $2,000 over the 20,000. I mean, that this is very nuanced, but people are going to open that bill and they're going to say, oh, my gosh, I just put $75 of gas into my car and, you know, the 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 food at the restaurant costs more, so the city's getting more in meal tax, and now, gosh, they're they're going to get me with the car tax also. Um, so I just, I'm really cautious if the rest of council thinks that the 80, if if option C is the way to go, um, you know, we've, I I'm still back on the 75% because I haven't seen the the city's budget and because I've been a part of council with almost six-figure, seven-figure surpluses the last few years. Um, so that's just kind of where I am right now.
I'm somewhere with you, David, and um we don't have that option on here, that 75% on here, so at least the 80% um would be somewhere where I would need to be. Uh, would be nice to see the figures for the 75% um with the cigarette tax being added and that was like unexpected uh wealth of 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 income that we have gleaned from that. Um, I don't want the public to think that we're gouging everything that they have that we could possibly get from them. Uh, we don't know what the real estate tax uh what the real estate assessment is going to be um with the um uh cost of food, cost of gas. Um, people are really struggling and I would not want to see where the city has taken advantage of an opportunity at the cost of our our citizens. Um, so the lower the better.
Well, I I I still think that, you know, I I taking into account staff's recommendation on this, that that we don't have clarity on our 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 future revenue needs this year, um, I am comfortable with splitting the the apple here and going with the 80% uh C, so if that 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 is still where I am on this.
And if that's a motion, if you're willing for that to be a motion.
Okay, if you want me to, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I recommend that city council act in the following manner, provide guidance to the commissioner of revenue to lower 100% uh NADA value that has been used to apply the PPT to 80% and to confirm the intent to apply PPT are at the current 60% level.
And if you could add in your motion to uh have that a a resolution to that effect and be part of that.
Prepare a resolution to that effect.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, for for the one year, yes.
Second.
I have a motion as second and welcome additional discussion. All right, if you're like an auctioneer and nobody's bidding, um, with no further discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, and I would call on Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Nay.
Mr. Alligood?
Nay.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye, because of what we have before us.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, have a uh three to two vote. As I forgot to acknowledge earlier, Mr. Smith is recovering from surgery and not with us this evening, so the uh motion carries uh three to two, and we'll get the uh resolution squared away for you, and uh Pat will be able to send out bills.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Speed recovery, I hope.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes, and they were included in your packet beforehand, and unless there's an objection from council, we will accept those as presented. Any objection to that? Not seeing any. Uh, next is uh time for uh public comment. We invite citizens to come and address council regarding things perhaps not on the agenda or on the agenda. And is there anyone here who would like to address council this evening? Hearing none, we will close the citizens' remarks at 7:36. Uh, next is consent agenda, request from Peter Jettin for the use of Brushy Hill Preserve and ask for council's consideration.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion as second, and as it is a consent agenda, there is no discussion but a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you all. Uh, next is unfinished business, and I'll call in the city manager for update and overview regarding the development at Spotswood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a reminder to everyone and those in the public who may be interested, we did, city council started a process uh several months ago, held a number of meetings, uh work sessions, et cetera, to explore how best to make the decision of choosing a developer for the Spotswood development. Uh, at this point in time, we've worked our way through all those meetings and work sessions, and the next step would be to have a public hearing at the April 7 meeting, and at that point in time, staff and myself would bring forth a recommendation as to the recommended developer to award the use of the site to, so there would be some potential development on that site. And of course, at that public hearing, uh, that will be the question, not should the site be developed or what type of development there, but who those developers or who that developer will be of the two who are in the uh process now, uh, who've made proposals. So, you know, as the mayor says many times, we'll take comments on anything in that regard, but the most pertinent issue is who will that developer be? So as a member of the public, you're always able to come out and make those comments, and we welcome those, but that will be the issue at hand, and at that point, council can make a decision after that public hearing or can delay a decision to a future meeting, but I will have a recommendation on that date. No action tonight.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Uh, hearing none. Well, moving to boards and commissions, the Blue Ridge Resource Authority met this past week, um, somewhat the normal course of business and paying the bills, and uh nothing else to report on that, but um uh that some of the improvements that have um taking place out there, I highly recommend, especially as the weather improves, to, if you haven't, take a trip out to our landfill. May sound a little crazy, but uh the landfill has beautiful views and it's a neat operation, so encourage people to go and see your tax dollars at work and talk a little trash if you'd like. Uh, Main Street Lexington, Ms. Strong.
The Economic Vitality Committee met today, and we continued our discussion on improving the wayfaring downtown. That's all I have.
Any uh outcome from the or actions at the wayfaring?
Not yet, uh, we still talking with other partners to work, uh, we'll have some conversations with tourism and ARB and um and some of the other groups that do these walking tours because we wanted not only to tell people about what downtown businesses that there are, but what other opportunities there are, such as some of these historic walking tours or even just for exercise. And so we we can get all that information in one place, hopefully using a QR code.
Good. I know the uh ghost tour is a favorite of folks, um, special time for that, but the Righteous and Rascals is always fun, uh, stumble along the sidewalk and read about the characters that have been here. Thank you very much. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong.
Uh, Planning Commission met last Thursday, and we continued our discussion of planned unit developments for mixed-use developments. And next week, we will meet um at 5 o'clock, and I believe it's going to be a work session with WNL to so that they have a uh informal opportunity to discuss the the master plan, and I believe that will be held at City Hall at 5 o'clock. The agenda comes out tomorrow, so you might, if you're planning on going to that meeting, just please double-check the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. Any questions for Leslie? Uh, hearing none, regional tourism.
Um, tourism met this week, um, and uh got a report that tourism staff has applied for a Virginia Tourism Corporation grant to promote the multiple regional events around this year's Fourth of July weekend. There are about six different activities in our community. Um, the potential grant is for $10,000, going to help promote uh Balloons Over Rockbridge, Lexington's Bike Parade, the Buna Vista Fireworks, the Brownsburg Garden Tour, and the Freedom Food Festival as well. Um, tourism staff also assisted local partners Lime Killen Theater, Gravista Bike Race, and Balloons Over Rockbridge with their own Virginia Tourism Grant applications, and they're all up for, I believe, $10,000, I think that's the grant amount. Um, Rockbridge Outdoors has applied for a grant to put in three new track trails, uh Brushy Hill, one at Brushy Hills, the Marl Creek Trail at McCormick Farm, and Glen Mori Park. Um, and Tourism Director Gene Clark participated on a call last Friday with representatives of USA BMX Bike Racing, the Horse Center, and local hotels to share thoughts on January's BMX Bike Race event and discuss ways it might be improved on in future years. And both USA BMX and the Horse Center were very pleased with this year's event, but local hotels had a mild gripe about a lot of muddy guests and dirt bikes being brought into the rooms. Um, The Love Letters at Hopkins Square was such a big hit that tourism staff is working with three local event organizers organizers, Gravista Bike Race, Apple Budok Festival, and Balloons Over Rockbridge, who want to secure the mobile version of The Love Letters for their events. And finally, visitor services manager Holly Rogers will be attending a Virginia Welcome Center seminar in South Boston, Virginia from March 28th to the 30th.
Terrific. And that's it. Dennis, on the um the trails, you said um McCormick Farm and Brushy Hills, who's heading that up?
Rockbridge Outdoors is is making is applying for the grant, yeah.
To tourism or Virginia?
They're they're applying to Virginia Tourism Corporation, and so tours, regional tourism is assisting them with that application process and trying to get that money for them.
Great, thank you. You you were so thorough and quick there, I I didn't hear that piece and left left me curious. Uh, RARO, Mr. Ziegler?
Uh, our baseball and softball seasons are are starting. Um, if you still need to have a son or daughter register, they still can, they'll be late, but we'll definitely find a place for them. River Runners registration is occurring now, uh, that's an awesome program. And then pickleball is launching and registration is occurring now. Uh, that'll registration will go till the end of the month, and then an introductory course will occur over the next four weeks at Mori River Middle School, and then open play will start to occur out at uh Rockbridge Rivermont uh in Fairfield. Um, and so this is done in conjunction with the Rockbridge Pickleball Club and and RARO, so that's really exciting, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I'm sure Doug Harwood, who's not with us this evening, will be elated to learn of the progress the pickleballers are making. Uh, threshold, Ms. Alexander?
No report, we haven't met since our last council meeting.
Terrific, thank you. And Mori Service Authority, Mr. Alligood?
Mori Service Authority. Mori Service Authority did meet uh last month and approved for the modernization, approved a contract for nearly $400,000 to Rambo Associates for modernizing the the uh water, the drinking water side of the uh business there. Uh, additionally, the MSA staff, some staff, and the Rambo uh consultants met with city council last week, and they were to meet as well with the board of supervisors to uh educate us on uh what type of project it is and the cost associated with it. And they're said, they said the we'll be submitting the application to the state, and we're all crossing our fingers that we meet the standards for a 45% forgiveness on $20 million is yet to be seen, but that's that's the carrot that's being uh hang hung out there to tease us with and whatnot. And uh so there is a another board meeting next next week, next uh Tuesday. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from Mr. Alligood? Um, in the mayors and chairs meeting, um, we did talk about future presentations by the MSA, ideally being uh held jointly with PSA, um, Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors and City of Lexington, so that um they're not spending too much time presenting and we get all the same information in a timely manner.
Right, one meeting should suffice.
One would hope.
For information.
Absolutely.
Right.
Keep us all apprised as we uh stare down this big ticket item. Um, I have no report this evening, I'll bounce pass it to the city manager.
Do, no report.
City attorney?
I do have a report tonight, uh, just two things, let me just pull up, my guys jumped the gun a little bit here. Uh, we've got information on what the city can expect from the most recent opioid settlement. Um, there's a range depending on whether or not the settlement pays the attorney's fees or whether the attorney's fees come out of the uh pot that's already been uh agreed to, so there is a range, but uh assuming splitting the difference, Lexington stands to get roughly somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000, um, basically end of June, uh, 1st of July this year, and then until July of 2038, we'll get anywhere between $6,000 and $9,000 a year. Um, that's roughly split between unrestricted uses and restricted uses that have to be uh specifically tailored to opioid abatement. And Jim and I have a call on Monday with our outside council to discuss the specifics of what um what if unrestricted is truly unrestricted and uh what the specifics are for the restriction, so um certainly uh better than nothing, um, at a decent, I think, overall amount, we're looking at between now and 2038, um, say, $160,000, $170,000. And that's not total from the opioid settlement, that's just from this one specific distributor settlement, so there will be more coming um at some point in the future. Then the second issue is one that I emailed y'all about, I've been working with the Attorney General's Office uh earlier this week to uh review the previously approved resolution. Um, and the Attorney General, uh, Assistant Attorney General that I'm working with had some reservations about us, including a specific uh contract, that contract for the underground storage tanks, um, and felt that that might somehow imply that we didn't, uh, Jim and I didn't have the authority to sign potentially other documents because we listed one specifically. Uh, so I have uh offered a an amended resolution with the Attorney General's new language that essentially gives Jim and I the authority to sign whatever we feel is appropriate and necessary to close the VDOT sale, which I believe has always been council's intent. Um, so I just asked for consideration or approval of the amended resolution 2022-03.
Was that delivered in our packet?
That was emailed to you this morning.
Got it, okay.
And that was.
Right, right, gotcha.
Yep.
I knew I'd gotten it, I couldn't remember where, and I was frantically looking for it here.
Yep, the Attorney General's Office wasn't working on our schedule.
Fair enough.
So I'll I'll make a motion that we approve an amended resolution 2022-03?
Yes.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Strong. Thank you. Any discussion? Jared, is there a closing date that has been set or is that still a moving target?
Still a moving target.
After this is completed, would you anticipate somewhat imminent?
I would think so. And that's, it's a bit of an opaque process on the other side was, we'll, we'll get things rolling. But I think from the city's perspective, it will just be figuring out the payment and recording the deed. So I think we've got everything after tonight. We'll have everything ready to go and then it's just a matter of waiting on them.
Very good.
But they have not committed to any sort of timeline or deadline.
Very good.
And I don't expect them to.
Thank you, sir. A roll call vote. Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Mr. Alligood.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much, and thank you, Jared, for carrying that torch and trying to hit the moving target. And I think, yes, in fact, we are very keenly interested in closing the deal and purchasing the property. Anything else from the legal world?
That's all I have for our report.
Thank you, sir. Next item is new business, review of proposed amendment to the sidewalk snow removal ordinance. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, all of us recall that time period about two months ago when we had that troublesome snow that just wouldn't go away. And we all found out very quickly that our current ordinance really was insufficient for us to resolve the issue we had, and that was getting the snow off of the sidewalks. We could take people to court and put them in jail, or we could fine them, but we couldn't actually clear the sidewalks and charge them with that. So with the support of the city attorney, we looked at the ordinance and we brought forward a revision to that ordinance that we'd like to propose to city council. It would remove the Class 1 violation, so there's no potential jail term, also leave a fine in place, and provide for the ability of the city to hire a contractor, get the walks cleared, and then charge the bill to that individual property owner. If they don't pay it, then goes on their property tax, which is similar to our weeds ordinance now and lawn mowing ordinance now. So that's what we would propose the council consider and adopt. Of course, you'd have to have a public hearing to do that, so we'd recommend that you schedule a public hearing for that purpose.
Thank you, Jim. Members of council, you had the opportunity to read the proposed ordinance. Are there questions or items you'd like to discuss?
I have one. Since we are trying to make it an enforceable ordinance, and I appreciate what we have. I think it looks very good. One suggestion I have, a proposal would be to reduce the fine from $250 per day to maybe $25 per day. I just don't see us enforcing a $250 a day fine. And if we are going to enforce it, then we need to enforce it on everybody and make it equitable. So, but I do think it's realistic to have a $25 fine. And I do like, definitely like the idea of hiring a contractor and charging that fee back to the, to the people as well. It could, it could be very costly to do both the fine and charging the contractor work back to them.
Well, I would, I would say to that, I think it would be very difficult to, to fine everybody who violates this. And, you know, we typically don't, it would be hard for law enforcement, I think, to, to write a ticket for everybody who might fail at this. And so the idea of the $250 fine was really to punish flagrant instances of this, not necessarily somebody who's a half hour late on this. So I don't mind the $250 fine. It might be less than that, but I think 25 is just too, too low. And the other issue that I have, the one issue I have with this, is the issue we have with the other one was law enforcement not really knowing who to write a ticket to. You know, if you're going to write it to the assistant manager of a store, you're going to write it to a tenant in a triplex? That's kind of confusing. So to me, if there were some way to target this more clearly towards the owner of the property, one, we would have a clear idea of who the owner of the property was, and then it would be up to the owner to recover that from their tenant or whoever is responsible for that. But at least I think then the fine would be in the right place, and it would be a little bit easier to administer. So I would maybe not suggest saying tenant, owner, or occupant, because in many instances, they're not the parties responsible for clearing the sidewalk.
Well, I think that's sort of the one, the fine and the expectation that they do it before six hours is that that's sort of the person that has possession of the property. So the tenant that's there on scene is the one responsible for actually shoveling the snow or having it shoveled, whereas the owner could be wherever.
Well, I think that's exactly the point. I think then the owner would be responsible for making sure their tenant does that, or the owner's going to charge their tenant any costs associated with their failure to, to do that.
To that point, I think the, if we, if the city would go in and remove it and charge, it is specifically limited to the owner of the property. So if the city goes in and does it, it's the owner. And I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying sort of the philosophy, I guess, behind it was if, if the goal is to have the sidewalks cleared as soon as possible, you want to tell the tenant, it's your responsibility to do this regardless of what your lease might say, the ordinance says you're responsible. But then if we get to the point where we have to try and recover the cost for enforcing that, then it does go to the owner.
I would also note, in the case of the fine, you know, there's a trade-off going to a $25 fine. It may not get anybody's, somebody's attention. $250 fine or even $100 fine is going to get people's attention. $25 fine, oh, I can leave that go for two or three days. It really doesn't matter that much. They'll still ultimately have to pay for the snow removal, but in the meantime, we've got snow on the sidewalks for three days. So we were sort of trying to get people's attention so they would actually clear the snow relatively soon.
When a fine is levied, and let's just say someone, three days that goes by and they, they incur $750 worth of fines, what is their recourse if they are not able to pay it? Can they go before a judge and have that reduced or can, can we drop that? How would that work?
Ultimately, up to the city if it wants to, because this sort of takes the misdemeanor court process out of it. It's the, it's the city going and writing a ticket for each day. And in theory, they would come before council and say, you know, I fined this $750 and I can't pay it. City council, will you waive it in my case?
That seems a lot to me. It just seems pretty excessive to, where I was totally for it being excessive of a threat of a misdemeanor and going before a judge. Nobody was going to get jailed, but you had to go before a judge. Getting a ticket for $250 and then $500 and then, that seems also excessive. And so there's got to be a, maybe if 25, if you just think that is too low. I feel like that actually is, is decent, but it can't be $250 in my opinion.
Well, I would feel more comfortable with, say, a higher number per day, but a maximum, because at a certain point, we're going to, we're going to clear the thing. So what if we say, you know, $100 per day, but a maximum of five or something that has an upper limit? Again, this is, this is not, this is really just going to be used in egregious situations. It's not as if everybody's going to get a ticket for this. I mean, that's not how it's intended to be used. It's, so.
Yes, I would still say it needs to be enforceable, and we need to back it up. And I'm not going to back up $250 a day, and even $100 a day gets, because it's $100 a day plus the snow removal. I think the, the whole idea is right on track. It's just this, this daily figure. And I think $25 will add up pretty quickly. And I think the biggest cost is going to be having somebody else do the snow removal.
I'd almost make a suggestion to council that it be a punishment of $250. When I think about the snow removal, frequently, Mother Nature helps and everything's fine. But when we have unique circumstances like we did earlier this year, some people were out of town and didn't clear their sidewalk. And when it became egregious, we didn't have the mechanism to go in and clear it. So whether it was one day, three days, five days, but when the city manager decides we're going to clear that sidewalk because it's near a school or high pedestrian and that needs to be cleared and someone hasn't, they would have a $250 fine, whether it was one day or three days. And the city manager could decide, we're going to deploy staff or contractor to remove it and whatever that cost is. So the maximum would be 250, whether it's one day or five days, if they haven't complied. And of course, then they should have had notice. But that keeps a challenging fine to keep people inspired to clear their sidewalk.
And I will say, as we were developing this, the 250 was basically out of thin air. So there's no real, from, I speak for myself, there was just to put a number for you guys to have something to discuss. But the issue, sort of the reasoning behind that, as we were thinking about it, was we, we want to encourage people to do this on their own. We don't want folks to sort of sit back and say, well, the city's going to come do it anyway, and they'll send me a bill and then I'll, that's taken care of. Like, we still want to incentivize individuals to do this and ideally, the city not have to get involved. And our concern was if there was no sort of substantial penalty, then that would be the response is, well, now the city's going to do it for me and they'll send me a bill and not my problem anymore. And I don't think that's really the intent of what council's trying to achieve here.
What do we use for our grass ordinance? I know you sent that to us before, but I don't remember what the penalty was.
I'd have to look that up to see what that is, if there's an actual fine attached to that. I believe that's just, we're going to go in and cut it and charge it for it.
Ms. Alexander.
I think no matter what we do in regard to fines and penalties or whatever, or timeframes, that this is going to be very difficult to enforce for our police department. They go knocking on the door of somebody and it's a nine-year-old frail lady coming to the door, or a man coming to the door. It's going to be a difficult situation to deal with. I am, my biggest concern would be those people who are blatantly disregarding the guidelines. And how can the police department distinguish between that or should they?
I don't know the answer to that, but I know giving people, I think a big piece of it is educating homeowners that they are responsible. I think, I know I had lots of conversations with people that had moved here the past, you know, three to five years and were, it was an interesting circumstance for them to say, I had no idea that I was responsible for removing the snow from my sidewalk, or the sidewalk in front of my house. They had cleared theirs, so.
Mr. Mayor, council, I would say that, you know, enforcement is always an art as, as opposed to a science. There are many cases when enforcement, strict enforcement is probably not helpful and does not accomplish the goal. As you indicated, or several of you indicated, we don't have the manpower to be out there a day after the storm and checking on 250 properties. We just couldn't do that. But I don't know if the chief would like to make some comments since she's here, she wasn't here for that purpose, but about how the enforcement tools she could use and that we could employ to be sure that we get the results we want without being too harsh on people. I, I recognize your, your comment, Ms. Alexander.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, as you all know, enforcement, as you said, even with the Class 1 misdemeanor, it's still at our discretion. And as the city manager and most of you know, we did wait two weeks and we did go out there and use a lot of manpower and discretion with that. And at the end, even with a Class 1 misdemeanor threat of going to jail, we did have two individuals, one adamant that they're not going to clear it. That's the city's issue and the, I pay taxes for that. The city needs to clear it. So those were one of the individuals. So I can see all sides of the story as far as a fine, and it, obviously, it's all for your consideration. But just like the city attorney and city manager says, if it's such a low fine, if someone wasn't even afraid to go to jail over it, I can definitely see $25 not being a threat. So as you said, Councilwoman Strong, it has to be something that can be enforceable. Obviously, I agree with everybody else that jail time is not something for non-removal of snow. We will work with everybody, but I do believe that the grass ordinance and the weeds, and as the city attorney pointed out, there is not a fine with that. And we would charge what it costs to remove it. So I think with the snow removal, put in maybe a specific fine, maybe if it's $250 the first time, and the cost of the snow removal might be adequate enough for an individual to feel like they have to comply. And as for the fine, I don't know. City attorney, I may be getting outside of my lane. But with the grass, if they don't pay for the bill, it's a lien that goes towards the property. So that could be the same thing, that an individual does not have to come to city council to ask for relief of that. It's a fine that if we had to pay or hire a contractor to do this service, that bill goes towards that property as a lien for them to pay for.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate you being here and sharing those insights. We'll just point out on the lien, there is in the state code allowing municipalities to enforce these snow ordinances, there is the, I guess, the floor of $200. So just from a very practical analysis, I don't know if, you know, assuming you get a contractor out there to do an entire block, I don't know what they're going to charge, but presumably less than $200 per owner on that block. So while the lien, and certainly appreciate the chief bringing it up, and it is in the ordinance that we can do it if it's more than $200, I just want to raise that very practical issue that we may not reach the $200 mark for the snow removal on a one-time basis to actually put the lien. So we would still be able to charge the person $50, whatever it ends up being. It's just that we, that, that $50 charge would ultimately not be enforceable by a lien on the property. Well, this was for information purposes only. We're not looking to approve anything tonight, but unless you have an objection, the city manager will move forward with scheduling a public hearing. And if there are modifications that you want to see, I would say please give staff clear guidance at this point if you want to see those numbers changed.
I mean, I obviously do, but I, I feel like we're able to change that as a council even after the public hearing. I mean, after, so maybe we don't need to tell the city manager tonight and settle on it. Maybe we hope to hear from the public, because bottom line, I think you said, we want to educate the public and not be in this situation again. And normally, Mother Nature has helped us, but we can't have a similar situation next year where
Right.
a lot of sidewalks are still icy around schools and downtown.
Just, just want to make two points. One, as Jared mentioned, it has to be over $200 in order for it to be enforceable as a lien, which I think we actually need to do if we're going to make this work. So I would prefer to have it be a higher figure and, and write fewer tickets. I mean, you know, have it be a rarer occurrence. So, you know, if after warning, I like the mayor's concept of basically, you know, if, if after the, the owner is warned, the city has to do it, then they charge a flat fee of $250 or whatever the actual cost of the, of the snow removal is, if it's over $250. I think that sends a pretty clear message, and it would be easy enough to enforce. And I think that's the way we should go.
Any objections to that or nuances?
Just a flat.
Crafting.
Just make, just a flat $250.
Or if, if for some reason it's someplace that costs more than $200.
Yeah. Or it would be the actual cost.
Yeah.
You like that?
Well, I do want to make the distinction between the fine for not clearing the sidewalk and the cost of having someone else remove the snow. So if we can't put a lien, if we give a $250 fine, we can't put a lien on the property because the fine's more than the $200. The $200 tied to the actual cost of the contractor removing the snow. So there's sort of two parallel issues here, the fine for non-compliance, and then recouping the cost for actually clearing the snow is not necessarily tied together.
So wait a second. You're saying that, that we could recover as a lien just the fine or just the cost of removal?
Oh, as a lien, only the cost of removal if those are more than $200 for a specific owner. And the fine is completely separate from that lien process.
Well, can I ask, can we say that the cost of removal is $250 and, and set that as the amount? And that way, we could recover? the amount, and that way, we could recover it as a lien? I mean...
Dennis, what I'm hearing you say is eliminate any fine. If you are ticketed for this, you have, and it's removed, there will be a $250 assessment for removal, 250 or the actual price. No fine, but if we, if the city has to dispatch someone to remove it, the minimum fee is 200, and that would attach.
$200 administrative fee, plus the actual cost of removal?
No. The cost of removal will be $250 or greater, a minimum of $250. That would be...
I mean, there's some properties...
Dennis, pop your...
Properties that have so much, you know, workways, that it may be more than $250. But I mean, so we could say $250, although that's probably a rarity, we're probably safe enough just saying $250. Would that simplify things?
Well, no, I think...
The issue is, we, to get the lien and enforceable, it has to be tied to the cost. So that's what we would need to, that's why I'm trying to think that the city...
What we're saying is, the cost will be $250 or greater.
And, right, and I think we could try that, but I think there would be a fair argument that it's tied to the actual cost. So unless we have a policy that there is some sort of cost, just the city to even go out there without removing anything, sort of on the books, consistently enforced, we've got a stronger argument that the cost to the city is more than the cost of the actual contractor. And that would, that might be a way to get to the problem.
You've heard the ideas. We're not going to solve anything or vote on anything tonight, but if you need additional clarity, please let us know. But I think you can mull over what you've heard here tonight and bring back, and we'll have a public hearing on a proposed ordinance, and...
But what I'm hearing is, there's stronger preference for doing away with the fine and moving towards the costs and enforcement through that mechanism, rather than dealing with the, either the one-time fine or the $25.
And it matches up a little bit more like the grass, the weed ordinance, yeah.
I think that gives our law enforcement the ability, or whomever it is, to knock on the door and say, it's got to be cleared, or else tomorrow, it'll be done for you, and it'll be a minimum of 200 or $250, and there's no if, ands, or buts. I mean, that's it. So I think that might be...
And if you got a problem with it, go see city council.
Right.
Yeah, I feel better about this, and I appreciate also how the police department can work with an individual, and kind of work things out so that we don't have to go that route. I appreciate that.
And I'm sure the police will not be praying for another snowstorm here in the spring, an extended period of cold time. But it does merit this conversation, recalling the selfless work of our city manager, and I think the fire department, and police department, and many others in our city that went and cleared walks for people that were in a position to not be able to clear their own and lend a neighborly hand. So thank you to the good work for that and organizing it. The next item is review of a proposed change to the city parking policy. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part of this actually revolves around that snowfall. When that occurred, we found that we had, and we'd seen this for months, probably years, a number of vehicles parked in the city hall parking lot that serves both city hall and the police department. And the folks who park there primarily live on Fuller Street, and it's a fine idea for them to park there when we don't need the lot. It keeps them from parking on the street, which is more dangerous. And so we have no problem or objection to people parking there. The problem is, they park somewhat indiscriminately. They'll be scattered about the lot. Sometimes that means they're parked in front of the police station, where police officers come to work, or people go to visit the police department, or in front of city hall, where our visitors are. And in the case of that snowfall, it really became very clear that was problematic. You had three or four cars clustered here, a couple there, they get moved for a week to 10 days. There were three feet of snow parked, piled up between the cars or along their bumpers. And so for, you know, weeks, that snow melded, and then the next morning, it froze, and the parking lot was a sheet of ice. And we didn't have any way to contact them, we didn't have any restrictions or regulations to help them to understand that that was problematic. So seeing that, and also noting that last fall, we had several complaints about parking and the use of the grassy field area behind the middle school here, for BMI parents and their families for tailgating, and then parking there. Again, clearly an activity that, for the most part, is not problematic. I think it's safer to have those individuals parked in the city parking lot than on the street and congesting the street. On the other hand, they're using city property, and it's the only time I'm aware of where somebody's using city property without any kind of permit or approval. So to me, that's one issue that has to come hand in hand. There should be some type of permit or approval, and I've worked with the police chief on that, to make sure we start putting something in place. And since they're going to be there, dozens of vehicles, we should charge them. You know? If they're parking on the parade grounds at BMI, they get charged. So if it's convenient for them to charge, to park in our lot, why not charge something? We're going to have to man that, we're going to have to police it in some fashion. If somebody's having an event on school property or city property, and it's a well, you know, well-maintained event and policed event, is it harmful? I don't believe so. But we do have to have somebody there to make sure that it is kept orderly. You know, there are certain things, like maybe you don't want them to bring guns on school property. Maybe you don't want them to have alcohol on school property, which I would say is always the case, both of those things. So we would have some policing that would need to go on, and, you know, it would go hand in hand with the parking. So what I'm asking city council to do is to take the parking policy that we currently have, and allow the city manager, myself, with staff, change that policy as needed, so that we could address things like parking in the city hall parking lot, which we've looked at a draft policy. We would not eliminate the parking, we would just tell them where they should park, so it's least bothersome for city business. We'd inform them that when there is a snowfall, they need to remove their vehicles, so we can plow the city parking lot. And we would provide a certain amount of spaces, first come, first served basis. They'd have to live on the street next to us, they couldn't be from six blocks away, storing a vehicle there for a month, because it was convenient. It's not a storied lot. We do have lots for that in other places, not city hall. So those are the kind of changes we'd like to be able to make, similar to the Randolph and Henry Street lot, that was a leased lot that we're going to lose. Take that off the books, just make those minor changes, work with the lessees to make sure that they are notified, et cetera. We did look at, in this policy, changing some of the rates, tweaking them on the current parking rates, primarily because, as it were, the annual charges were actually more than 12 months of charges. In other words, we're charging people more for staying there longer. Seems to me that why would we want to have somebody come in every month for the lowest rate and renew their parking permit every month? We don't want to see them every month, they don't want to see us every month or every quarter. You give them a little break, so they do it annually, and they don't have to come back. So those are the kind of changes I would like to be able to make, and request that city council, again, allow us to make those changes, enforce the policy. Anytime you want to see the policy, we'd bring it back for review. If you had some concerns or complaints, which I don't know that we've had, certainly in the months I've been here and for many years, but if there were complaints, we could, you know, provide counsel with that policy, and you could ask the questions you need to answer.
Members of council, have any questions? Jim, one question I have is, with what was in our packet, that, I'm not sure exactly where the parking on the school property is addressed in here. Is that something you would bring new, or is that...
Well, if you look at the title, Procedure for Central Business District and Other City Parking Lots.
Correct.
So we'd make regulations for that particular lot.
Okay, it's not in here?
It's not in here, no.
Okay.
Just like it's not explicit for the city hall lot, because it's not part of the policy, it's the regulations for each individual lot, if necessary.
Gotcha, thank you.
I move to authorize the city manager to manage and revise city parking policy and fees for all city-owned or leased parking lots in areas within the city.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good luck in the drafting.
If I could make one other comment, we will then put in place also a permit for use of the city property here behind the school. And we did coordinate with the school on this already, and they just don't want to be in the enforcement business, so obviously, that's our role, and we'll take care of that.
Very good. Next item is consideration for improvements of Evergreen Cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City staff has been working for some time, and we even got into a discussion some months ago about the frontage on Evergreen Cemetery, and how to make that frontage more attractive and welcoming, inviting, not only for those individuals who have family members there, but for all of us in this community as a source of pride, because it is a city facility. We want it to look good, we want it to say positive things about our community. And it has not had the attention, potentially, that it could have had over the years. So let's take some time and put some resources and invest in that today. So what we've done, as you've heard in the past, is look at potentially placing fencing, and I shouldn't say potentially, but our proposal is placing fencing along the entire frontage of the cemetery. We've already improved the entranceway. We've removed already, if you haven't been out there, what was considered the very old and beat-up landscaping in some places that was not very attractive. There was brush vines growing in it, some diseased and poor species of trees, if you will. So that's been removed. So we would put the fence in, we would then landscape appropriately along that fence, so we'd have a nice green buffer inviting for people to come in, open so people can see into the cemetery, where now, we couldn't see until you were right on top of the gate almost. And also, one of the things we talked about with one of our cemetery advisory board members is that, looking out of the cemetery, in some areas, unfortunately, what you're looking at is the beautiful orange canopy of the Sheetz Station, and the back of the university cleaners, and the Kentucky Fried Chicken roofline, and it's not quite what you'd like to see. Now, we're not going to be able to change that all, because some of that is right where the entrance is, and you can't block the entrance. But to the extent that we could, you know, Ms. Westheimer and our arborist and horticulturist looked at what we could do there, and again, with strategic placement of certain shrubs and trees, we'll try and soften and break up some of that obtrusive view that we don't want to see there. So that's our proposal. We did look at that about a year ago. Prices have gone up substantially since then, both the landscape materials and fencing Again, I can't predict what will happen next year, but I'd just as soon go ahead and do it this year before the prices go higher. And why leave it when we, it's my strong recommendation, we should do this for the cemetery, for our community. So up to $75,000 for the fence, for the landscaping, we hope we can do it for less, and we'd get right at it. Again, we've got good input from several more members of the cemetery advisory board, just to, their interest, they'd like us to do something as well, they'd like to see the cemetery look better. So it was a nice little conversation we had, and I think we got good support from that, from those individuals, to move forward.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Ziegler?
Just had a question on the proposed source of funding.
It would be a budget amendment, they have to come before you. We have funds, of course, as you know, but it'd become from a budget amendment.
Specifically from the general fund?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
From general fund revenues in the current fiscal year?
Well, we have carryover funds yet, we have...
We have carryover funds, exactly. So we've got, certainly, we've got funds to draw from. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sorry, I didn't point that out. Thank you.
So I would like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to expend up to $75,000 for landscaping and fencing along the entire frontage of Evergreen Cemetery.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Let's have a question about when the work is anticipated to be done.
Well, we have to order, we have to order the fence, and I can't tell you right now how long that will be. I did ask Jeff Martone to check into that, and he hasn't heard yet from the supplier. And the same thing is true with landscape materials. Typically, you'd say it's going to be readily available, but sometimes it's not, which is one of the reasons we wanted to try and, it's later than I wanted to come before you, but it's early enough, I think we can get what we need and get some of it in the ground yet, this spring. And we've got a plan put together by the arborist/horticulturist of some nice beds right in front of the entrance, not in front, to the side, off to the side of the entrances, and then the species that we have along the fence. But some of it may have to wait, just because of supply, the landscaping that is, because watering it there would be very difficult over the summer. We'll try and get as much in as we can. Of course, the fence is only limited by when it's available.
Do you anticipate staff will, or public works will do the construction of the fence?
I do not.
Okay, it'll be hired out?
Yes, it will.
Very good. Mr. Alligood?
Thanks, just a point of information in there. What was the original estimate? You referenced a previous estimate without saying what it was, and I know that was then and now is now, but 75 now, what was it?
Between 60 and 65.
Thanks.
And there's a new sign. Did it get installed yet? About, maybe two weeks ago? I haven't checked.
I saw the old sign was removed. When I was out there, I did not see the new sign, so I don't know if it was removed and not replaced, or I just missed seeing it, I'm afraid. I don't know.
There was a decision made about where to place it. I just don't know whether they put it in or not.
Since it's not too dark tonight, maybe a full moon, you can drive by.
Wait till tomorrow.
Wait till tomorrow. We have a motion and a second, would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. On this topic, I'd like to pile on. The property, you may have noticed as you've gone to visit Evergreen Cemetery, when you turn right behind CVS on the left-hand side, that's part of the property of Central Elementary School, which is owned by Rockbridge County Public School System. And Celia Rainey, our arborist, has been in contact with representatives who acknowledge that that's their responsibility, and are making plans to cut down the poison ivy and the stuff that's just volunteered, and thin out some of the trees. So you'll see some additional improvements on our neighbor's property as well, and excited to see that street be a little bit more presentable. Next item is our closed session. And unless anybody has anything else, before Ms. Alexander reads us into closed session, council members, you have a delightful green pot of gold, and that is from Janie, in case you didn't know. So Janie, thank you for the treats. And also, send out get well wishes to Chuck Smith, again, had surgery earlier this week and is healing well by all measures, but not with us in person this evening. And at this time, I'll ask Ms. Alexander to read us in, and thank you all again for joining us this evening.
I move that Lexington City Council will convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Section 2.2-3711, subsection A, paragraph 3 of the Code of Virginia, a closed session for the purpose of discussing the disposition of real estate for a public purpose.
Second.
Thank you. We have a second roll call vote. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
A vote aye. Will now go into closed session. Thank you.